Adrian N. Brightfouder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, September 20th at 6:30 in the Federal Historic Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for September 20th, 2021. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to when phone lines are unmuted. All phone lines will be unmuted during the consent agenda, public hearings, and public input periods, and city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the regular session is as follows. Mayor Buell?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sprank?
Here.
Councilmembers Kavanaugh?
Here.
Farber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Resnick?
Here.
Rousell?
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan?
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sprank, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. For those who are able to stand, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are proclamations. We have the National Rail Safety Week proclamation.
Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation?
Good evening. Bob Schizzle, Assistant City Engineer, and I've been asked by the railroad to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Bob. City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas 1,889 railroad crossing collisions resulted in 678 personal injuries and were responsible for 201 fatalities in the United States during 2020. And whereas 1,088 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States resulting in 532 pedestrians being killed and another 556 injured while trespassing on railroad property right-of-way during 2020. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right-of-ways are private property, enhancing public awareness on the dangers associated with the highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrian and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obtaining and obeying established traffic laws while reducing the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas the International Association of the Chiefs of Police and National Operation Lifesavers, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in the effects to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enable applicable laws in the support of National Rail Safety Week. Now, therefore, I, Danny C. Sprank, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 20th through the 26th of September, 2021, as National Rail Safety Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of safety rail education. Thank you very much, Bob. Come on, Adrian.
We'll move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Is there anyone here in the public who wants us to hold anything from the consent items for discussion?
Can you keep them up for me?
Yep.
My name is Randy Vossen, and this is Mimi Vossen. We live on 9843 Katy Cove.
Tell them the agenda item.
Oh, it's about the proposed land for the industrial park.
That'd be in public input, wouldn't it?
Point of order, that is not something that's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that would be public input, so in a little bit, then.
So, a little bit?
Thank you, thank you. So, anyone on council have anything on the consent items they want?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Number 20, please.
All right, number 20, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 20.
Second.
First motion by Resnick, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, and item 20.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
All of us received an email late this afternoon from one of the other towing companies, not objecting to the towing contract, but objecting, I guess, raising the concern that they feel they're missing calls, that their customers are not being given the opportunity to request them when they're in a traffic collision or something like that. I'd just like to have staff address that before we approve this. I certainly intend to approve the contract.
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Chief of Police Mark Dolcine. Anytime an officer goes to a traffic accident, a stalled vehicle, it's a responsibility to inquire who the driver would like to tow their own personal vehicle. So it is the driver's choice, the owner's choice, unless it's a situation where it's a blocking traffic and the other, the wrecker service might be prolonged. You know, if their Highway 20 is blocked at 5:00 in the afternoon, we can't wait an hour for somebody to come in from out of town. So it's the driver-owner's choice, unless it's an abandoned vehicle, and then it goes back to our normal towing process.
Thank you, sir. That's all I wanted, is to raise a question and make sure that it was publicly answered.
Any other questions?
So with that, I'll move approval of item 20.
Second by Resnick.
Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have no items set for public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to boards and commissions.
We have boards and commissions appointments for the Airport Commission, Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee, and the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
I'd like to make a motion on those, folks.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, point of order, actually, is it possible for us to just vote entirely on the entire slate of candidates at this point if we make that motion, or do we need to go one by one? I've always wondered this.
I've asked that question myself.
Typically, we would go commission by commission, but you could do a singular motion per commission.
Understood, thank you. Then, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem? I would move to appoint Douglas Brotherton and Marie-Curts Weber to the two four-year terms on the Airport Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rousell. Motion by Kavanaugh, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we have no items set for public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to boards and commissions. We have boards and commissions appointments for the Airport Commission, Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee, and the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
I'd like to make a motion on those, folks.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, point of order, actually, is it possible for us to just vote entirely on the entire slate of candidates at this point if we make that motion, or do we need to go one by one? I've always wondered this.
I've asked that question myself.
Typically, we would go commission by commission, but you could do a singular motion per commission.
Understood, thank you. Then, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem? I would move to appoint Douglas Brotherton and Marie-Curts Weber to the two four-year terms on the Airport Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rousell. Motion by Kavanaugh, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
All right. Douglas Brotherton and Marie-Curts Weber, you are now on the Airport Commission.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I move that Corey Velasquez be appointed to the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board for a three-year term through July 1st, 2024.
Second by Farber.
All right, motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
That motion passes. Corey Velasquez, you are also now on the Building Code Advisory.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Rousell.
I move to appoint William Doyle to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second by Farber.
Second by Farber, Mr. Rousell, motion by Ms. Rousell, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
All right. William Doyle, you are also now on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Jones?
I move that we appoint James Holtz, reappoint James Holtz to a three-year term through August 17th, 2024, on the Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee.
Second by Resnick.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Mr. James Holt, you are also now back on the Housing Trust Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to appoint Beth McGrath to the three-year term on the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Second by Farber.
All right. Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Ms. Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Mr. James Holt, you are also now back on the Housing Trust Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to appoint Beth McGrath to the three-year term on the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Second by Farber.
All right. Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Ms. Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
And Beth McGrath, you are now on the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission. Come on.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please plan to approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. And public hearing number one is amend the Unified Development Code to allow registered child development home as a permitted use in office, commercial, and industrial zoning districts.
Mayor Pro Tem, Kavanaugh?
I move to receive and file the documents, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second?
Second by Jones.
Second by Jones. Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Jones, and Wally?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Manager with the City of Dubuque. So the request before you tonight is a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to add a definition for registered child development home and to allow registered child development homes as permitted uses in our office, industrial, and commercial districts citywide. The objective of this amendment is to allow additional opportunities for the provision of accessible and affordable childcare to reduce barriers to the development of registered child development homes. Encouraging and increased availability of childcare is supported by our Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan. It's also been identified in our Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan. So the Unified Development Code allows registered child development homes currently as home-based businesses anywhere residential use is permitted and as an accessory use to a residential use. Currently, a registered child development home is not allowed in non-residential districts, hence the reason why we're coming for you tonight. There are currently two categories of childcare listed in our Unified Development Code. Those are licensed childcare centers and childcare in general, which includes registered child development homes, which we talked about as a home-based business. Childcare home and registered child development homes are permitted, as I mentioned, as home-based businesses, but then we also have licensed childcare centers, which are allowed in all those commercial, industrial, and office-type districts that we mentioned. We eliminated them as conditional uses. So if you remember, we came back before you a couple of years ago to amend our Unified Development Code to permit licensed childcare centers by right as opposed to going through a conditional use permit. Those were identified to help remove some barriers to create affordable childcare and allow a little bit more ease of access and to create additional opportunities for them to move through the process and not have to go through the city process for that, especially since they're already being inspected and regulated by the Department of Human Services. So why amend the PUD, or why amend the text amendment through the Unified Development Code? So the state actually has three different categories. We have two categories, and the state's rules have been changing over the years, and we keep trying to amend our Unified Development Code to make it a little bit easier for them. So the state recognizes those three general categories of childcare as childcare homes, which may or may not be registered, child development homes, which is what we're talking about tonight, which is required to be registered, and then childcare centers, which require licensure-ship. So, you know, having these three distinctions of childcare in the state code is misaligned with a lot of the terms that we have in our Unified Development Code. So this amendment would permit registered child development homes in our office, commercial, and industrial districts citywide, provided the applicant can demonstrate they have the approved, up-to-date registration from the state of Iowa. And as I mentioned, the state of Iowa and the Department of Human Services will go through these properties and make sure they're registered and meet all their criteria. And at the Zoning Advisory Commission, there was a public hearing that was held, and Sherry Kennedy of Childcare Resource and Referral, they're kind of the local organization that helps assist individuals who are looking at providing childcare in our community, spoke in favor of the text amendment. She emphasized that there is a lack of childcare in our community, and this action will help remove a barrier to allow more accessible childcare for those additional districts that I mentioned. The Zoning Advisory Commission discussed the request and felt it was appropriate, and by a vote of six to zero, the Zoning Advisory Commission recommends the City Council approve the text amendment. A simple majority of the council is required to approve this request. And then I also have Chairperson Matt Mulligan is present with us if you have any questions of the Zoning Advisory Commission. Otherwise, I'm available answering questions you may have.
Council, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. So to be registered by the state of Iowa, do you have to be licensed? Is that a requirement?
That's the confusion, right? So that's the question we had back and forth. So there's a license requirement, and there's a registration requirement. They're not the same. They're both still required to go to the state, they still both require approval. One's just referred to as a license, which has more strict requirements, allows you have additional children, more above and beyond what you could have for registered childcare, and a little more flexibility, so.
Are there levels? Home, then registered, and top is licensed? Is that?
Yeah, top would be licensed, yeah, yeah. So those are the ones that are, you know, your larger-scale type operations that you see throughout our community, standalone centers, as opposed to an in-home daycare where an individual may be seeing five children in the home. They're not required to be registered, they can be registered, but then we have this category that's in between, it's called a childcare development home, which currently, right now, we would only allow in a residential district, we would not allow them in a commercial district, which sounds kind of silly, if we're going to require a licensed childcare center, and these have to be registered with the state and go through a process, why wouldn't we just allow them in a commercial district, office and industrial district? So we're helping clean up our Unified Development Code to help that accommodation, to provide a little more access to our affordable childcare in our community.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone from the public that wants?
That's next, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that has any questions or thoughts on this? All right, seeing none, I suppose then. Adrian, would you call the roll then?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Public hearing number two is resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2021.4.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Resnick.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Resnick, second by Mr. Jones. Do we have any online or public input on this, or anything you want? Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Just an introduction, thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors recommends City Council approval of an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2021.4. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would authorize the removal of a parcel from SubArea C of the district that has remained undeveloped in order to allow for future development on the parcel. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request of Mayor and City Council approval.
Do we have any public input or online input?
There are no public comments in the GoToMeeting chat, and I have unmuted our phone-only participants so that they may speak as well.
And the city clerk has not received any emails on this item.
All right, and do we have anybody in the chambers as well? Seeing none, bring you back to the table for council. Any questions? Seeing none, all right. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
That motion passes, seven to zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2021.5.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by the motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Mike?
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors recommends City Council approval of an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2021.5. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would expand the district to include the property removed from SubArea C by version 2021.4 to be designated as a new SubArea O. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request of Mayor and City Council approval.
Corey, do we have any online input?
We do not have any input on this item.
And Adrian?
No emails for this item.
All right, anyone in the council wants to discuss this? Seeing none, bring you back to the table. Anyone from council? All right, okay. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
That motion passes, seven to zero.
Public hearing number four is fiscal year 2022 first budget amendment.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second by Rousell.
Motion by Ms. Farber, second by Ms. Rousell, and Mike?
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan, director of finance and budget Jennifer Larson has recommended an approval of the first fiscal year 2022 budget amendment, which amends the fiscal year 2022 budget for city council actions since the beginning of the fiscal year and includes items which city councils express support. Second, the amendment includes fiscal year 2021 budget carryovers to fiscal year 2022 of encumbrances totaled $18,173,430, capital projects totaling $65,732,986 that were not completed during the prior fiscal year, and associated revenues totaling $42,948,749. There are operating budget appropriation carryovers of $3,267,454 and operating receivables of $2,472,470. Also total transfers between funds of $9,280,774 are reflected. The capital amendment items include an increase of $11,587,514 to adjust the capital budget for the American Rescue Plan Act funds received in June 2021, which includes the water SCADA system upgrade for $466,254, the North Cascade Water Main for $100,000, the public-led line water main for $106,833, the Chesterfield Drive Water Main for $115,000, the Davenport Road Extension for $98,535, the Briarwood Subdivision Water Main for $100,000, the Water and Resource Recovery UV Disinfection System upgrade for $235,000, the Water and Resource Recovery Center High Strength Waste Receiver and Storage for $857,395, street overlays additional five miles for $850,000, flood control levee certification for $177,618, Purina Drive flood wall for $102,888, Catfish Creek Lift Station Forch Main improvements for $3,546,614, Center Place Alley Sewer for $372,000, fiber for $1,600,000, the multicultural family center tuck pointing for $23,000, park development for $705,730, park improvements for $1,48,360, civic center improvements for $141,720, floor and sun and pool heaters for $17,913, business, nonprofit and arts group assistance for $250,000, and conference center improvements for $333,000. The operating amendment expense includes an increase of $770,427 for the American Rescue Plan Recovery Plan funds, which includes the travel to Dubuque assistance of $270,427, and utility bills assistance of $500,000. The city maintains a general fund reserve or working balance to allow for unforeseen expenses that may occur. The reserve is estimated to be 48.27% on June 30, 2021, as computed by the accrual basis methodology used by Moody's Investor Services. The general fund reserve balance on an accrual basis is estimated to be $45,978,884 on June 30, 2021. Fiscal year 2022 amendment number one includes net expense carryovers of $19.7 million in the general fund for projects and purchases that were not completed by June 30, 2021. These projects and purchases are projected to occur in fiscal year 2022 and will draw down fund balance to approximately $26.3 million or 27.57%. The goal is to have at least a 20% reserve. In fiscal year 2017, the city had projected reaching this consistent and sustainable 20% reserve level in 2022. In fact, the city met the 20% reserve requirement in fiscal year 2018, four years ahead of schedule, and with all the prior year contributions, this is sustainable. The general fund reserve balance on an accrual basis exceeds 22% in fiscal year 2021, which is the margin of error used to ensure the city always has a general fund reserve at least 20%, as computed by Moody's Investor Services. In fiscal year 2022, the city will have a projected 27.57% reserve or $26,264,815, which exceeds the 22% reserve balance goal by an estimated $5,306,881. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
We are in a public input on this, a public hearing on this. Corey, do we have any public input?
There is no comments in the go to meeting chat.
And Adrian?
And there are no emails for this item.
Is there anyone from the chambers that'd like to talk? Seeing none, bring you back to the table. Anyone from council?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, Mr. Van Milligan, a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate all the numbers. Is there something predictive or evaluative with this information? Can we say anything from year to year? Do we compare this to past years? I mean, nothing is the same with COVID. But, I mean, is there something that we can do with this information that's predictive or evaluative?
Well, I'm going to let Finance and Budget Director Jennifer Larson address that. But as she walks to the podium, I'm going to guess the answer's not going to be extremely positive because of the extremes of the pandemic and the extra federal funds that have been introduced and things like that. But I'll go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening, Director of Finance and Budget Jennifer Larson. I would agree with that answer. The amendment one for fiscal year 22 is larger than normal, I would say, because of the additional federal funds that were received through the American Recovery Funds. So that has increased what we're seeing as far as what's included in the amendment. In addition, I would say some of the other items are comparable, so like the encumbrance carryovers are pretty similar, and that kind of depends on the number of capital projects that are ongoing at the end of the fiscal year. So that kind of determines, you know, how much in projects are carried over. Typically, operating carryovers are minimal. I would say in this case that it would be the same, except for, again, those federal funds are included in this amendment.
I see. Thank you. I've always been looking for a financial report card of some time and some kind, and Moody's is kind of our substitute for that. And we're doing everything that Moody's wants us to do to build our financial strength. So I like that. So I guess that was my question. Can we evaluate if take this year, just let's go two years out, three years out, can we do anything with this information to say, oh, we're doing well, we're doing better? Or is this strictly a one off in the First Amendment and really just for this situation?
We definitely can do comparisons as far as like year-end results, especially with like our audited financials, or we also prepare a cash basis annual financial report. So we definitely can do those comparisons year to year. Amendments are, like the First Amendment, is typically comparable to the prior year, except this one is an exception because of COVID. But those comparisons can be made if that request is made.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, could I add something? Thank you. The other thing I was added is on the last city council agenda, we shared with you what we call a dollars and cents publication that gets mailed to every home and business in town electronically, if you pay your bills electronically, and by paper if you don't. And there's some benchmarking in there that I think helps people understand the financial situation of the city. So one, it reports to the residents that the mayor and council reduced the property tax rate this budget year by over 2.5% and that all the classes of property benefited from the reduction in that property tax rate. As a matter of fact, multifamily residential.
If you leave your name, number, and a brief message, I will give you a call back.
Which is a two flat or above received over a 7% property tax reduction because of the mayor and city council actions. But then, we take our property tax rate, and there's only 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000. So we compare ourselves with those cities because they operate under all the same rules that we operate under. And the mayor and council, the property tax rate you adopted was the second lowest property tax rate of those 11 cities. And as a matter of fact, we missed being the lowest by very close. Ames beat us by just a little bit. And while I don't recall the exact numbers, I believe the average of all the other 10 cities is about 55% higher than our property tax rate. At the same time, in that publication, we report on the amount of reserves that we have, which very well exceeds the 22% that we target. The council policy is at least 20% in reserves. We target 22%, so we don't ever miss the 20, and we exceeded that. And it shows for a five-year projected period, we'll exceed it every one of the next four years. And that's all we do is five-year projections. And then it shows when you look at city debt, that since 2015, every year, the mayor and city council have approved the budget that retired more debt than was issued. So every year, the amount of debt the city has goes down. But also, there's a statutory debt limit that, once again, all these 11 cities in the state of Iowa operate under the same rules. It's a percent of the city's assessed valuation that you're allowed to issue in debt. And of those 11 cities, we have the fourth lowest use of our statutory debt limit. It's 45%. So if there were to be some kind of natural disaster or something like that, where the city did need to access debt, we've got tremendous debt capacity under which to access. Hopefully, that won't happen. And if you look at the five-year projection, the amount of our use of our statutory debt limit will go down every year. And actually, over time, we become the lowest use of statutory debt limit. So I would consider all those things to be in the category of report cards on the city's financial condition. But as you mentioned, Moody's is one of the best report cards because that's an independent national agency that comes in and examines the books of cities and then rates their bonds. So when you go to sell bonds, these banks and other investment institutions need to know, what kind of risk am I taking if I buy this community's bond? So they look at the Moody's rating. And Moody's does a very thorough review of the financial conditions of a city. And our bond rating is so good that our interest rates were, quite frankly, staggeringly low, in the area of 1.5% on one issuance and in an area of 1% on another issuance. And so I'm sure if people were refinancing their homes, they'd be thrilled to get that kind of, that kind of interest rate. And we get that kind of interest rate because of the way the mayor and the city council financially manages this budget and this community. And I think those are all very positive report cards for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Simple question. So where's the funding actually coming for, for all this? For this?
It comes from different sources, but Jennifer can...
So the, the big chunk of the amendment is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So we receive 50% of the about $26 million, so about 13.2 million we receive the end of last fiscal year. So we're now amending that into the budget. The biggest chunk is in capital projects, and then, of course, we have some operating support there for utility bill assistance and nonprofits, businesses and art, community. The other part of the, largest other part of the amendment is unfinished capital projects. So those were previously approved by city council and being carried over to the new fiscal year to be completed. Those would have various funding sources. So enterprise funds would be funded by their user fees, water, sanitary sewer, stormwater. And then, of course, local option sales tax and a small amount of general fund would be included as funding sources on those.
But if you don't mind, I think that's worth emphasizing is the mayor and city council, besides lowering the property tax rate in recognition of the pandemic and the economic circumstances that put some people in, also through this process is budgeting half a million dollars to help people pay their utility bills who struggled with that because of unemployment and other things that happened in their lives, illness unfortunately in some cases.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. My question is about the reserves. So, you know, we're over where our goal is. It's great to know that we, you know, 22% is kind of what we're shooting for, but we're, from what I see here, a good $5 million over that. So what are we? And I know you're always calculating. I know you come back with more amendments for us throughout the year. But are we going to be looking at that from a budget standpoint, you know, when we go to actually set the budget for next year? I mean, we have excess of what we usually require of ourselves. I know at a time like this, we want to play it plenty safe because, you know, we just experienced a pretty crazy year. But at the same time, with that excess, there are, there are some needs that go unfunded every single year. Is that something that's on our radar that we might be expecting to see come budget time?
Yes. So normally what we do, because fortunately for us, our budget is managed so well that every year at the end of the fiscal year, we have additional cash on hand that wasn't designed to be part of the reserves, but would become part of the reserves if they weren't utilized. Normally, what we do is we hold them until the next year's budget process, look at all the competitive, you know, things that departments ask for based on your priorities, and then reallocate those resources. I do think that there's the high potential that this year, that's going to be a different process, and you'll see some amendments during the year to allocate some or all of that $5 million out before next year's budget process. And just because this year, we're having to be, I would suggest, a little more nimble about taking advantage of the opportunity to recover from the economic devastation of the pandemic as opposed to waiting a whole nother fiscal year. Would you say that's accurate, Jennifer?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's a combination of amendments and going through the budget process.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Lot of good policy discussion, and I appreciate that. I want to point out to the public and to the council that the budget amendment itself is a fairly routine check. It's, these things have happened by city council action since we set the budget last spring, and they have to be reconciled, and the budget has to be adjusted. This happens probably three, four times a year. So it's a very routine event. It's not about the debt limit. It's not about the reserves. It's just about balancing the checkbook and making the adjustments because the million-dollar piece of equipment that you budgeted for came in at $800,000. Now, so you've got $200,000 to put back in the system to make sense out of it. It's because stuff happens and things break, and you have to expend money that's not budgeted, and you have to put that back in. That's all a budget amendment's about, is taking all the things that the seven of us did up here and plug it into the budget that have occurred since we certified the budget last March. And they happen as a matter of routine, and it should get a routine vote. We should get moving on.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if you don't mind, I'd like to offer my agreement to that statement. So for instance, this list of things related to the ARP funding, you've already publicly seen this list twice. And so you've reviewed it and had a chance to talk about it. So this, aren't like these things are a surprise to you that how did they end up in the amendment?
All right. Seeing other discussion. We shall move on. Adrian, will you call the roll on it?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is Tiffany Court Lead Mine Sinkhole Remediation Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion by Mr. Resnick, second by Ms. Rousell. And Mike, do you have anything on this one?
Yes, I could give the information on this agenda item if that's all right with you.
Go for it.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan, assistant city engineer Bob Schissel recommends city council approval of the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $165,000 for the Tiffany Court Lead Mine Sinkhole Remediation Project. In September 2018, a large sinkhole developed on private property at 2792 Tiffany Court, which we believe rests on or near an historically large subterranean crevice, Stewart's Crevice, related to an abandoned lead zinc mining operation of the 1800s, based on historical reference in Samuel Calvin's Geology of Dubuque mapped records of 1858 and 1899. Subsurface collapse has impacted the nearby residences and has the potential to impact public infrastructure in and on Tiffany Court. City staff have worked with the homeowners, Bob and Barb Friedman and Steve and Kathleen Aba, providing technical oversight using tried engineering methods of mitigation since the onset of the sinkhole. Unfortunately, remediation and mitigation efforts have been unsuccessful, and there continues to be an ongoing funneling and subsidence. City staff have also reached out to and developed a collaborative network of technical experts at the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, or IDLS, the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, the Iowa Geological Survey, the U.S. Geological Survey, the Office of Surface Mining Reclamation and Enforcement, and the Mine and Safety and Health Administration. These various agencies have been a valuable resource in providing technical assistance and guidance to the property owners and city staff. In November 2019, the city retained a geotechnical engineering consultant to perform a geotechnical investigation in subsurface borings in the vicinity of the mine shaft sinkhole. Both property owners, the Friedman's and the Abas, have indicated that their respective property owner's insurance does not provide coverage for lead mine sinkhole remediation. The property owners have also reached out to legislative and congressional staff to inquire and request funding assistance at the state and federal levels. In December 2020, Mr. Friedman sent a letter to Governor Kim Reynolds requesting assistance in mitigating the lead mine sinkhole. February 2021, the governor issued a letter which authorized IDLS to utilize funds from Iowa's coal regulatory account to mitigate the lead mine subsidence located at 2784 and 2792 Tiffany Court. Following this announcement, IDLS approached the city to inquire if the city would be agreeable to acting as the local public agency and contracting authority for the Lead Mine Sinkhole Remediation and Mitigation Project. Following the request, the city attorney's office worked directly with the state attorney general's office to bear cooperative 28E agreement between the city and IDLS. The agreement, to the fullest extent permitted by law, indemnifies and holds harmless each party from and against all claims, losses, damages, and liabilities. The agreement also makes no guarantees about long-term performance of the constructed remediation and mitigation, nor may it be construed to provide any protections to any person or property from future subsidence at 2784 and 2792 Tiffany Court after the remediation and mitigation is completed. Pursuant to the terms of the 28E agreement, IDLS will reimburse the city for allowable expenditures up to $150,000 unless otherwise approved by IDLS or contracted work performed as specified in the approved engineering design plans that is direct related to the remediation and mitigation of the lead mine subsidence, including but not limited to labor, materials, and equipment. Any such additional costs not covered by IDLS shall be the sole responsibility of the property owners. The city and IDLS will be responsible for their own respective administrative costs associated with the 28E agreement, including the cost of administration, resources, and employees' labor on the project. Pursuant to the terms of the 28E agreement, the city developed and acquired signed site access agreements with both property owners, the Friedman's and the Abas, holding the city and IDLS harmless in the event of any unforeseen damages resulting from the lead mine sinkhole remediation and mitigation efforts. Costs associated with any damage to the public or private property, real or personal, resulting from the remediation work performed, is not ineligible reimbursement IDLS expense. The property owners have agreed and included in the site access agreement are solely responsible for the repair or replacement of any sidewalks, driveways, or landscaping, and the costs thereof which may result from the remediation work, and that city and IDLS will have no responsibility for such repair or replacement or any ineligible costs. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing about this. Corey, do we have any online input?
There are no comments on this item online.
And no emails for this item.
Do we have anybody in the chambers that wants to come up and discuss this? Seeing, seeing none, bring this back up to council. Any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I just want to reiterate that I did receive a call from one of these citizens, and they are extremely thankful for all the hard work of city staff, that long list of work that Mr. Van Milligan was talking about. A lot of cities would just say, you know what, this is not something that's our fault, and we're just going to let this go. But a whole lot, a ton of work went into this by the city staff, and he was very appreciative of...
a whole lot, a ton of work went into this by the city staff, and he was very appreciative, of course, all the neighbors are. And I also want to thank the staff for this, a ton of work that legal and engineering and so many others did. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would like to, and I appreciate that acknowledgement of all that work, and I would like to specifically call out City Attorney Cronin Brumwell and Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel and Engineering Technician Hugh McCarron, because they really went above and beyond on this one. And it was, this was an extremely challenging project to even get to this point. And so, you know, I'm very proud of them, and I'm glad that the neighbors recognize that, too. And thank you, Councilmember Resnick.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I want to add thanks to the state of Iowa for picking up the costs. This is a unique situation, but not that unique in Dubuque, Iowa. There's a lot of potential for this happening elsewhere in this community, because it is an area that was mined for lead and zinc for decades and decades, the 17 and 1800s. And there isn't good mapping of where and what, and how deep and how much. And so, when a hole opens up that's threatening to suck up your house and your neighbor's house, it pretty quickly goes beyond the ability of a homeowner to mitigate it. And thankfully, in this case, all the pieces fell into place that we can make a mitigation attempt. That's going to be pricey, it will probably work, because we've got pretty smart people saying that it will probably work, but it might not. Anyhow, it's great when a plan comes together. But I do have to say this is Dubuque, Iowa, it's full of holes, and I'm not sure the next one will come together, if there is a next one. We may be unable to help the next person if this happens again. That's a shame, but it's also a reality. And it's not dissimilar to some of our retaining wall challenges. Could pretty quickly overwhelm the person responsible for the wall, who probably, when they brought the property, had no idea they were responsible for a wall. And now the wall's failing, and oh my God, what do we do? So, this time, it all came together. I'm really glad, and I want to thank the state again for stepping up and helping us do something that might otherwise have been impossible.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mike.
It's an important point, and thank you, Councilmember Jones. The reason for the city to be involved here is public utilities are threatened by this sinkhole. If this was a 100% pure private property issue, we really would have no ability to have a role in it. But this one is different, and so we are able to help out. And of course, the state funding made it all possible in the end.
Thank you. See no other questions from council? Adrian, will you call the roll?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number six is Kennedy Road Water Main Extension Project 2021 Public Hearing.
Mayor Protem. Mr. Kavanaugh. I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Jones. Mike, do you have anything on this?
Yes. All right. City manager Mike Van Milligan, city engineer Gus Ahoyas, and water department manager Christopher Lester recommend city council approval of the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $1,042,975 for the Kennedy Road Water Main Extension Project 2021. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
We are in a public hearing regarding this matter. Corey, do you have anything online?
I do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay. And Adrian?
No emails for this item.
All right. Is there anyone in council that want to address the, all right, seeing none, bringing it back to council? Anyone have any questions? All right, moving on. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Protem asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I'm sure there are some folks in chambers that would like to come up for public input, so.
Let's try this again.
Yep, that's all right.
So, my name is Randy Vossen, and this is Mimi Vossen. We live at 9843 Katy Cove. I guess this whole situation kind of came upon us when we read the paper on Saturday and saw the proposed acquisition of the land, which is, well, it about made me sick when I saw it, to be honest with you, because basically, it's a industrial park in our front yard. It's not a sinkhole, but it's something that is out of our control, and that's how we feel right now.
Of a home we just built two years ago, selected, beautiful property.
Yeah. Anyway, I think all of our neighbors are feeling the same way we are and have a lot of the same concerns that we have at this point, which are considerable. As a community, I just, I guess for me, I just didn't expect that I wouldn't receive some information that this was happening in my own backyard. I just had a shed project that I worked on. It was a little 12 by 8, and I had to send out letters to all my neighbors. And not a single person can even see that shed. So, it's kind of interesting that this is a large project impacting my wife and I and our neighborhood directly, and we saw nothing about this. I, myself, don't find this to be the right time to develop something like this. As I drive through Chauvinale, all I see is help wanted on every single building. And filling positions with people that are qualified seems to be another problem that I see in my own business, not in my business, but where I work, and many other people are running into the same exact issue. And to me, investing in a land acquisition that will turn into just another industrial park when there are other viable options, which would include revitalizing some of the areas that I've seen, either on Kerper or on Chauvinale, which I noticed there's still some space there for more building as well.
Sideball, the old pack, there's so many areas.
Yeah. And I guess I hear the word sustainability a lot used by this city. And to me, it's more important to consolidate the impact of the land use, not just developing in every direction of the town, but to try to find a way to consolidate that and make it so not everybody has to be around this. It's everywhere. I mean, all you have to do is look. It's everywhere we see. We should tread lightly on our land. I am super concerned about, and I know Mimi and my neighbors are too, about some of the problems that you get with an industrial-type setting. You have sound pollution, which is already bad enough with the arterial coming into our area. We get a lot of jake breaks on all of the time. Air pollution would be another one. We are not guaranteed what was going to be put into this place. It could be another pet food place, which I just bite by yesterday, and it's not very pleasing. Water pollution, we get our water right there. So, any runoff from whatever businesses are there, whether it's just off the roof into the land, we are going to be impacted by that. And lastly, is light pollution, which already is bad enough for tamarack being there. And I can only imagine what it's going to look like with parking lots and all of these buildings at night lit up for security or any other reason. I can guarantee you, we will never have our windows open, you know? And that's one of my favorite things. We built there because it's south-facing, get a nice south wind in the summer. I can only imagine what we're going to get now, if this happens. To me, I understand that you guys want to continue this development, but at the same time, I think you need to consider the people that are going to get impacted directly from this. And we and my neighbors are going to get very impacted.
And our children.
To me, I find that we're talking a lot about developing businesses, but we're not talking about developing something that is non-tangible, which is the health of our community. I think we should be putting more money into the recreation of that area. When that, when the southwest arterial is being built, I saw so many people walking, biking, running, because it's a safe place. There is no safe places.
Before it opened to traffic.
Yes, before it opened for traffic. Even now, though, they still use it because it has one of the best shoulders in town for that sort of thing. If you wanted to bike, a lot of bikers use it for that reason. I just, let's put the money where our sustainable mouth is. That is my personal opinion on that. We should invest in the people in place to get a healthier community and boost our immunity, which we're talking about our health. And with COVID and everything, it's been a big issue. Well, how are we going to fight this? How are we going to fight getting sick? I think the northwest arterial is a good example of where the southwest arterial I see it going to, which I feel is very, it makes me sick to think about, just because people that drive right now from Asbury over, the comments you get, oh, it's beautiful going through this town. You know, they see the countryside, and it is gorgeous. I mean, if you've ever stopped and looked, it's a beautiful place. And I can see it getting ruined really quickly. I don't know, you know, how to stop it. I wish I had the answers to that. I know it's going to impact other people, and the southwest arterial already has. But industrial park is, I can handle the traffic in that, but to have, like, businesses that are going to be creating noise, air, water, light pollution, right in my front yard, I mean, literally in my front yard. If you saw where we lived, you'd understand.
The picture in the paper of Katy Cove, and I mean, it's the only street that's pictured on where this industrial park is. And right when you come around the corner, our house faces that. Their houses face it. It's, he's got horses there, and there's wildlife coming through that area. And in the short time that I've had to research, I'm in healthcare, and I research stuff, and looking at the impact of being directly next to an industrial area, you've got acute respiratory illnesses, cardiovascular illnesses, eye problems from the air pollution, dermatitis, cancer in the water system. And I don't want that where I lived. We just bought this beautiful parcel of land and built this house, and now an industrial park is going to be right in our front yard. Please reconsider this. There are other areas to put industry and the farmland and the beauty in that area of town.
If you want to buy that land, make it into a park. I don't know if we have enough parks in Dubuque. There are some beautiful parks, but of all the things that I can think that heal you, it's being outdoors.
Mr. and Ms. Vossen, you've exceeded the five-minute public input period. If you could please wrap up your comments, that'd be appreciated.
Well, I think I've said all I need to say. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you for hearing us.
Steve Peters, 9878 Katy Cove. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things my neighbors said. They have said it very well. I do have horses, and our property and our fence of the horses is going to be right next to where the proposed industrial park is. I looked up light industrial, and that has a big varying degree of what can go in there. And, you know, I did talk to, I think it was Wiley, yep, that a little bit. But, again, my biggest concern is that, you know, you're going to have the horses, and if you have a business right there, it's going to have a parking lot right there, you know, what's that's going to do? I did send an email in, so I think, I don't know if you guys got it and stuff, but I put some questions and concerns in there. But again, there's just really a lot of unknowns with the whole situation, and, you know, just have a lot of concerns, so just want to voice those right now.
Hello, my name's Michael Lopelt. I live at 9909 Katy Cove. And everything they said encapsulates it really nicely, but I'm here not to reiterate, but to request that there's a little bit more communication throughout. We've been brought up to this point with the Weber Group and the River City Group, that it was looking to be a home development potentially. So, to find out 72 hours ago that it's going to be light industrial was quite a shock. And if we're a community and all in this together, it seems like we failed at that moment, because we kind of had that mad scramble mentally, trying to figure out what we could say or do at this moment to make sure that we all kind of shared the same information. And we're here to share with you a very quick synopsis, again, 72 hours, after two years of thinking it was going to be a home development. And we would like you to show a little bit of compassion and respect as we move forward with this, so we understand, you know, as a community, what our tomorrow may be. Thank
Hello, my name is Chad Wagner. I'm at 2201 Joanne Drive in Asbury. Not here to speak about the issue that was previously brought up, but I'm here today to bring to your attention a problem that I have with the city housing department's interpretation of a current city ordinance and ask for your help in correcting this problem. On June 25th of this year, my brother and I purchased a single-family home located at 2206 Southway in the city of Dubuque. We purchased this home through a legal entity that we created called Old Mule LLC. We bought this house for our parents to live in as their primary residence. And since these are our parents, we charge them no rent, and they enjoy full use of this home. Last Tuesday, September 14th, I received a notice in the mail from the city's Housing and Community Development Department notifying me that I might be operating a residential rental property without a valid rental license as required by city code. This letter directed me to apply for a license, pay all fees associated with obtaining a license, provide access to the property to city housing inspectors, and attend the property management training program. If I did not comply with the letter, it stated I would be subject to municipal infractions. On the next day, Wednesday, the 15th, I contacted the housing department via email and explained that since we received no rent payment and that our parents occupy the home, that the property is not a rental and that ordinance would not apply. Lucas Gonyer, housing inspector with the city, responded to my email that the home would not be exempted from the licensing program that I would need to apply for the license citing Iowa code. I then received a court summons in the mail on Friday, September 17th, from the district court, from the city as plaintiff citing Old Mule for violation of the code, and that I'm to appear in court on November 3rd. I also called and left a message with the city attorney's office on September 15th to discuss the legal application of the ordinance to my situation, to which I have not received a call back yet. I also called to discuss the matter with Alexis Steger, head of the city housing department, on September 17th, to which I've also not received a return phone call, which brings me here to you this evening. Iowa code does not clearly define what constitutes a rental property to the degree that fits my situation. However, Iowa code does clearly reference the receipt of rental payment as consideration for a valid rental agreement, which in our situation, we do not have. Furthermore, this property is not available on the open market for the general public to rent or lease. Sole purpose of owning this home is for... for the exclusive occupancy by our parents. We recently moved them to Dubuque to have them closer to us and family to help them, to help take care of them as they age. When they vacate the home, the home will either be sold, or if my brother and I continue to own the property and put it on the market as a true rental, we'd be happy to and would intend to apply for landlord's license at that time. Therefore, I do not believe that I should be considered a landlord today. I simply bought a home for my parents to live in. Furthermore, I ask, if this ordinance is being applied to me, is it being applied equally and fairly? For example, how does the city currently treat the following situations? A married couple who live in a property owned by a trust that they've created, the sole owner of an LLC that holds title to his principal residence, parents who permit their children to live in their home, either as a minor or an adult, a married couple who permits an elderly parent to live with them in their home, person who moves into their parents' home to manage it after the parent is relocated to a nursing home, or a person living in a home with their spouse or significant other who is the sole title holder of record. I suspect in these cases, the city does not require the property owner to obtain a landlord's license and common sense supports the idea that not all situations warrant the need to be licensed. I commend the city for enacting an ordinance with the intent of protecting its citizens, but the interpretation of the ordinance by city staff in this situation is an overreach. I would respectfully ask the city council to consider this information and formally request that you review the current policies as the housing department operates under in this regard, recommend that they either recognize the distinction and difference in this situation, or if necessary, craft a policy that recognizes the situation, or consider enacting an ordinance that protects property owners that find themselves in my situation. In light of, in light of these circumstances, I respectfully request the city drop its lawsuit against Old Mule LLC and refrain from seeking further action against this before I'm required to obtain relief through the court process and through further time and expense on my part. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Seeing no other public input, Adrian, remove us on.
So I just want to acknowledge for the record, the email that Mr. Steve Peters mentioned that was sent earlier outlining concerns to the impact of property owners regarding action item number three, and that email was forwarded to city council earlier.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Yes, could, could we give the people who, who spoke to us tonight, what are the next steps? Do we reply to them formally or informally, or what, is there a result of them coming before us with these concerns? How do we generally handle this?
Well, the one topic that was brought up was the purchase of the Weber Industrial Park property. So that's on the agenda later tonight. So the mayor and council is going to consider that. And while it's not a public hearing, so there's not any opportunities to present, there will be future public hearings related to rezoning and, and other activities on the property. And so there are opportunities to participate in the process after property acquisition. The other item, I would, I'll discuss with the housing department and the city attorney's office and whatever the legal interpretation is, it is. If it's legally required to get a license, we're going to have to legally require them to get a license. And if it's not, then we wouldn't. So I, I can't answer that question tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to action items. Action item number one is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Quarterly Update.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Jones.
Receive and file and receive the presentation.
Second by Resnick. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Resnick, and sure Greater Dubuque has a presentation for us. That's all right.
Mayor Protem, Sprank, and in virtual communication, Mayor Beal, ladies and gentlemen, the council, city manager, city clerk, and city attorney, and your most excellent staff. My name is Rick Dickinson. I have a pleasure serving as the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. As a condition and opportunity provided to us in our development agreement with the city of Dubuque in exchange for funding, I'm here to provide a quarterly update on the regional economy and the activities of Greater Dubuque Development. But before I begin, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce the newest addition to our office, Vice President of Business Services, Jason White, who joined us earlier this year, but has now fully moved to the Greater Dubuque area. And I'd like him to tell you a little bit about himself and his background. So if you would, please welcome Jason White.
Thank you, Rick. Mayor, council. Good evening. My name is Jason White. I serve as the Vice President of Business Services with the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. Been on board since around May 1st, but formerly got settled here in early August. I have very deep roots in the Greater Dubuque area and it's very exciting to be back home. I grew up just outside of Worthington on a farm, went to Beckman Catholic High School, graduated Loris College, and then worked in the Iowa Legislature for a couple of years. Worked for the city of Correville on some redevelopment initiatives while I got my graduate degree from the University of Iowa. Managed three Iowa-based economic development corporations as executive director, then took a detour to the state of Wisconsin, where I was the first president and CEO of the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. About two years into that time, I invited Rick Dickinson to Oshkosh because the people of Oshkosh admire the, the story of Dubuque and I have long had admiration for Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. And the work that they do was something I was trying to emulate and establish in Greater Oshkosh. During that time, I was able to facilitate with my team seven million, $70 million global headquarters for Oshkosh Corporation, established an innovative workforce development program called Winnebago Catch a Ride, which seized upon the volunteer strength of our community to drive people to work when they did not have cars to drive to work. And also recruited a minor league NBA basketball team, Wisconsin Herd, which is an affiliate for the Milwaukee Bucks. But really excited for that, of course, but even more excited about the work that's to come here with Greater Dubuque. Why? Because it's in Greater Dubuque. So really looking forward to the many conversations to come with all of you. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I was excited about Jason being introduced tonight because I assumed he was going to bring some birthday cake, but I guess that didn't happen. Oh, yesterday, sorry. We missed it.
He, he shares a birthday with my granddaughter, but my granddaughter won on the present side of things. We're thrilled to have Jason with us. Welcome, Jason. And he's been here since May, but already he was the principal in charge of the project, now public Zero Zone, an employer of eventually 50 folks that consider both Dubuque and Dyersville. Chose Dyersville because of a spec building that's under construction. And thanks to the involvement of the city of Dubuque and Dyersville, they are locating to, to the Greater Dubuque area. So he's already shown his stripes with that project. Before I begin with my comments, I would like to just address briefly the concerns citizens regarding the industrial park. And although notification of neighbors to a facility is not required in property acquisition, as the city manager mentioned, eventually would be with any rezoning. But I assure both you and your neighbors on, on Military Road in proximity to the project, our office at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is at your disposal to answer any questions you might have. I want you to know that we're fully supportive of the purchase, but as neighbors, you deserve to have a great neighbor and you need to understand what's going on. Tonight's about acquisition, but the future would, what to be done with that 156 acres. It is contoured, so there will be development of approximately 100 of that 156. And I assure that we will contact each of you, give you our contact information, and be able to answer any questions you might have. Even if you don't like what we're saying, you have every right to know what we're saying and we will afford that to you, I promise. I wanted to talk a little bit about the regional economy. So as of July, which is our latest data, we'll probably have additional information tomorrow morning for August. We had 58,900 folks working in Dubuque County, the MSA of Dubuque. Our unemployment rate was 3.9%, meaning there were 2,200 folks who were officially on unemployment in Dubuque County. We increased jobs year over year from 2020 to 2021, from the pandemic to current July data, by 2,600 net jobs over that one year period. That's 4.6% growth, which was the second highest in the state of Iowa, second only to the Duane metro area as a percentage of job growth. We are currently at 1,200 folks working in our market shy of where we were in 2019, which is the most comparable unaffected by the pandemic. We are in the process now of planning a Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and the Board of Directors will be meeting next week to do some long range planning. And in doing that, they did some community assessment that included surveys of over 80 community leaders, only 12% of which were public officials. They wanted us to rank, they, they were asked to rank the performance as being very important, important, or less than important on three categories of what we do at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. The first was strategic initiatives. This includes our broadband initiative, renewable energy, transportation, and other things that make this a community of choice. The interviewees said 52% ranked this initiative as important, 38% as very important, for a total of 90%. We asked how they felt about business services, our business retention and expansion programs, our recruitment programs. They ranked 45% as important, 51% as very important, for a total of important, very important of 96%. When we asked how they felt about the importance of our workforce solutions, 17% said it was important, 82% said it was very important, for a total of 99%. One respondent simply said, this honestly must be our only priority, but this will need more creativity and bolder solutions. And those are the very things that we're working on at Greater Dubuque Development today. In addition to the Jason White coming to our staff, we included last Monday, Nick Hockenberry, our Director of Workforce Solutions, and also Mandy Dawson, Director of Workforce Solutions. Both uniquely qualified to take us to the next level to both utilize the resources and solutions we have in place and create new ones that we will be announcing in the coming months prior to the beginning of 2022. We are aware because we are in touch and we are working with you in all matters. I am very optimistic about the future of our community and our organization. And yes, workforce is a challenge and one that we will tackle and outperform our competition. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yeah, thank you, Rick, for the update. And welcome, Jason, too, as well. Do we have any way of knowing how many people live in Dubuque but work somewhere else from their living room? So, you know, they-
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, from the living room.
From the living room. Yeah, so from their home. They're working at home. They don't, you know, we, we know there's lots of help wanted signs around town for people who need to work somewhere, you know, in a physical location. But what about, do we have any way of knowing that number? You know, you have, you live in Dubuque because you love it here, but you work in San Francisco?
No, we don't. And that is a, that is a challenge. And, you know, it's been publicized the last couple of weeks. This isn't the Great Depression. This is the Great Resignation, where so many people, for a variety of reasons, are changing, changing jobs, leaving a job, not knowing what comes after, changing employers, seeking new careers, or just sort of waiting for the dust to settle, the pandemic, to decide what they need to do in the future. And certainly, working remotely is one of those challenges. In fact, I had a conversation with one of our principal employers last week, who is struggling with the notion that employers from around the country are contacting their employees, offering them bonuses of what they're currently making, because they can't find talent where they're at, and then promising the opportunity to work remotely from wherever they wish to live, pirating that talent from that company in our community and that individual getting a bump in pay and hopefully staying in our market. But it causes the challenge of backfilling that talent once they leave. So there's really unique pressures on what's going on in Dubuque. And there's one other thing that I'd just like to share briefly with you, with you, and which is impacting the challenges we face in regard to workforce solutions. People think that 1983 was the bottom, 1984 was the bottom, highest unemployment in the United States back then. But the real truth is that Dubuque started a slide in 1976 that lasted until 1990. This community lost nine, over 9,000 of its citizens to that recession. And quite frankly, local and county government that seemed to be ineffective in working with the private sector to address the issues of the day. It took from 1990 to 2013 to get back to 1976 population levels. Now, if you take the children that would have been six years old in 1976 and would have been born after that date, and you look at the demographics of Dubuque today, we have more children from zero to 20 than the state as a percentage of population. We're about the same from 20 to 30. You go to 40, or you go to from 50 to infinity, we have a higher percentage of our population in those age brackets than the rest of the state and the nation. But from 35 to 50 years old, we are down. Those are the children that left in the economic downturn of the late 70s and 80s, and they weren't, they were never to return. And that's the gap we have in talent, that key component, middle management, people from 35 to 50 years old who are high achievers, very talented. They weren't born here. They weren't raised here. They didn't stay here. And we have to backfill that weakness. We have a lot of work to do in regard to workforce solutions. The times are challenging, but I think we're in an excellent position to do it because we are, to the point made by earlier speakers, a community of choice and take great pride in that. We have job opportunities and we have the tools to connect the employer to the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Seeing none, we shall move on to receive and file. And Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Hi.
Resnick?
Hi.
Farber?
Aye.
Beul?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Rucel?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Adrian?
Action item number two is fiscal year 2021 year end annual report for Five Flags Civic Center.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Mr. Kavanaugh? I move to receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second by Rucel.
Second by Jones. Motion by Kavanaugh, second by Jones. Looking forward to hearing your guys' presentation. But wait, don't call yet. There's more. All right, thank you.
Good evening, city manager, city council, HR Cook, general manager, Five Flags Center. Not that I've stood here last year because we were all at home, you know, doing the Zoom, Zoom meetings, but last year at this time, Five Flags Center was closed. All of our employees were either on partial or full furlough or laid off completely. And there was a great unknown in the industry on what's going to happen with entertainment, tourism, conventions, sporting events with the COVID pandemic. At that time, everybody was closed. Even the state of Iowa, the governor had issued a, an ordinance or an order for everything to close regarding anything with the, of the public venue. anything with the, of the public venue. We weren't sure what we were going to do when we did open up. At that time, we had, we had to relocate our events to 2021. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to keep our workforce, and we weren't sure what we were going to do even in the future with the Five Flags Center. During FY20, FY21, we lost over $375,000 in revenue that could have come in to the, to the venue. And during that time, ASM Global worked on a, what we now call Venue Shield, which was our reopening plan. We took this reopening plan and redesigned it for Dubuque itself, regarding our CDC guidelines, our local ordinances, our CDC guidelines from the state, and started an education process to the public for when we did open up, that we would be ready to accept people coming through our doors in a safe manner. Use of protective devices, as far as the PPP, physical distancing, we were not even at half, half-capacity, and we worked at prepackaging our concession items, keeping our distance. We trained our staff to work remotely and also at the public, should they come through the doors, in a more distant manner. We started out very slowly. Since Iowa was one of the first states to open up, we were surrounded with Wisconsin, Illinois, Minnesota. Those states were not, not quite open, as open as the Five Flags, or as Iowa. And so we started looking at sporting events, smaller events such as comedy shows, that we might be able to host, just to test our theory, to see if people were ready to come back into our buildings. So what we found was that there are, because we had the arena, we had the theater, we were able to host some smaller shows, some comedy acts. We were able to acquire several of the wrestling tournaments that couldn't be held in Wisconsin, that couldn't be held in Illinois, brought those to, brought those to Five Flags Center during, during the, during the pandemic. And what that did was it helped us help the downtown, as far as the businesses, the retail, the restaurants, and the hotels, which were suffering. We went, we didn't make a lot of money on, as far as revenues concerned from these shows, but it really helped out downtown. Once we saw that we could safely open, then we started aggressively going after some of the, some of the larger shows. Again, going through the sports, there are a lot of things that we tried that, that were participatory and not necessarily people would buy tickets for, the motorcycle racing, the wrestling, disc golf, those are not things that you would necessarily buy a ticket to watch, but we had a lot of participants come to town over the, over the course of that weekend. In March, we basically classified as our reopening. The Lee Bryce Show was held in the arena. We were still at half-capacity. We were able to bring in a Rodney Carrington show, which did two shows, 700, over 700 tickets for the two shows. Lee Bryce, this was one of his first shows coming off of the pandemic, and we found time and time again, the artists that came onto our stages or performed, this was their first show back, as long, as well as ours, and they were very happy to be back. What we found was the public was ready to come back, and unlike some of the public perception, what we did find was people were willing to do what it took to come back in a social environment, the mass, the social distancing, disinfecting, you know, opening up the doors a little bit earlier. There were certain rules that they were willing to, to participate in so they could come back to these shows, and we were able to come back in a safe manner. And what we found was, when they came back, they were able to come back, and they actually spent more money with us, because they were socially spaced out, they had more, they had more room, but also just, they just had this pent-up frustration, that they wanted to be out in a social atmosphere. For instance, the band Firehouse, which was here in March, each man, we had a per cap, which is how much money is spent per person, set a new record of $28, $28.50 per person for every person spent in the building. So that has since been broken several weeks ago by Co. Wetzel, running out $32. When I arrived here five years ago, we were hovering right around an average of about $10 or even $8 per person. It's not because we raised prices, it was because we were offering a better quality and, and giving them the opportunity to buy in a safe manner. 2021 in review, we've added quite a few, we did add some new events. Again, the Holiday Haha and the Holiday Blitz, the wrestling tournaments, the smaller comedy. Clark University hosted their commencement exercises at our facility in May, and you can see we're a very busy building, starting in March, and our staff, starting in March to April, they were still on partial furlough, because again, we didn't know what the future, the future was going to hold for us, so they were working every other week to, to, all of us were, in order to bring these shows to us. Regionally, we did a comparison of the various venues, and some of these are in states that were closed, but a lot of them were in Iowa, the comparison of how many shows Five Flags Center had versus the other venues in our surrounding area or in our market. At one time, according to Pollstar, and talking to some of the people at Pollstar, we were the busiest building in the United States at one time for about a month with the amount of events that we had. We, again, we felt we had an obligation to the community to provide entertainment. It's, it was a double-edged sword. You know, we could have remained closed, like some of these buildings, but we decided to come back slow and come back safely. We could have applied for more grant money, but we decided to go in the opposite direction and give, give the people some, something to do and, and try to get us back on track, somewhat that, that normal that everybody talks about. The 32 events that you see, they're evenly spaced in between the theater and the arena events, so. Some of the numbers for this year, again, because of COVID coming in at the time that it did in March, half of our, basically half of our revenues, half of our attendance was gone, starting in March through the month of June, and the attendance itself were gone. So if you look at FY21, when we started up in November, December, in January, and you combine FY21 to FY20, as far as attendance and event days, we're right back where we were in FY19. So we, we really did pick up where we left off in FY19 and actually did a little bit Year-end financials, again, we finished the year very well, financially, considering we were closed six months out of the year for both of those years. Again, if you take FY20 and FY21, as far as the gross ticket sales are concerned, they do match the FY19 ticket sales. So again, leaving off where we, where we were, the gross food and beverage actually went up, if you combine those two, beating 2019 numbers. Year-end financials, again, the benchmark was, we did come under the benchmark this year, because we had events in, from the month of March through June, we're able to beat the benchmark by over $100,000 coming, coming under that. We did receive a, a grant from the state of Iowa, from the Arts Council, for $57,000. That is reflected in these numbers, but still, considering we were one of the only buildings in my company, ASM Global, that actually did meet their budget and beat their budget and, and host events, that's really a, that's something to be said for the citizens of Dubuque, wanting to come out and, and support our, support our facilities, especially if all the facilities in Dubuque. If you look at the FY21 expenses, there was a question at one time, if we closed Five Flags Center, what would, what would the expenses be? How much would it cost to maintain the facilities? This $1.1 million for FY21 and expenses, that's about eight months' worth of no employees, no salaries. So those are the true numbers of maintaining these buildings, both the theater and the arena. It's still a very expensive building, even when it's closed for a partial year, to maintain. So if anything we learned from, from this, that even when we're closed, it's still an expensive building to operate. What we started to do when we opened up is we started, we sent out emails to everyone who has purchased tickets. Again, most of our tickets now are purchased online or via mobile, so we have access to their email database, and we're sending emails out. We're ready for you, giving us, giving the participants or the people coming, what to expect, where to park, what are the protocols, because they are different in every, almost every city. You know, what has changed since they originally purchased the ticket? Because some of our events are over a year old, and we rescheduled them several times. What to expect, what can, what kind of cleaning process do we have? You know, what, what entertainment? We usually open up, what we call the Bud Light Lounge, is on the second floor, we bring in a local band to play for 45 minutes prior to the original doors opening up, to take some of the pressure off of the doors, so that people aren't crowded. So that's that social spacing that we were working with. It had an open rate of 43%, which is, which is very impressive for us. People wanted to, people wanted to come back, but they, it was a very good education process for, before they arrived. Some of the ticket buyer demographics, it's interesting to see, we now have, and if you see and look in the middle, the top 10 cities to purchase tickets, Clinton, Lancaster, and Macau were not in the top 10 last year or in prior, prior years, so we're starting to see some of our ticket buyers coming in from a little bit further out. These are the top 10. Of course, we still have ticket purchasers from Chicago, from Rockford, from Des Moines area, but really, it's, it's still, still Dubuque is number one, Glene is two, and Piastah. The income, because again, these, these numbers come from when you purchase a ticket, when you pay with a credit card, we have your information, and we have information regarding, not all your information, but we have information regarding the, the income of the families, where do you live, what, you know, how many kids you have in your house, are you married, are you female, male? And what we're finding is, throughout the years, the income level, we run about 60% of our customers are in households of $75,000 or less on a median income. So we have to be extremely cognizant of these events, of our concession prices, and trying to keep everything very reasonable, very affordable, to over half of our ticket buyers. The other interesting items, when I first arrived here, most of our ticket buyers were over the age of 54. We've now seen that level out. I think that has to do a lot with the, the amount of, the entertainment that we offer and the demographics that we're going after. The sales channels, we are at evenly matched on the, going to the Ticketmaster app, coming to the box office, but by the time you add in the internet, we're starting to see that switch going to almost everything online. We're one of the few buildings that still operates a box office in the Midwest. Most everybody has closed their box office with COVID reasoning, and everything has to be online, or, or we want to make sure that we offer this in person, to avoid some of the service charges, again, going back to keeping everything affordable. Real briefly, some of the, the website, we're still having an increase in our website traffic. Most cities viewed, and again, Madison, Omaha, Cedar Rapids, Minneapolis, Chicago, they keep coming up year after year after year. These people are looking at Dubuque, they're looking to come here, they're, they're going to the hotels, they're coming to the shows that might be on the weekend, and they're using this as an excuse to spend the, to spend the weekend. Lee Bryce, Sticks, and Clay Walker were some of our higher, higher-ranked websites, clicks, click-throughs. Again, it's going to be down because we're a closed part of the year, but it's, it's nice that we still have these new sessions coming in. Social media, as always, you know, our Facebook likes seem to continue to go up, we're working with Twitter, we're working Instagram, I mean, that's, of course, that's the wave of the future. Over 17,000 likes on our Facebook page, five years ago, it was about 1,500, so we're seeing that starting to explode. Some of the highlights this year, of course, and the busiest week of the year, May 14th through the 22nd, you know, the Clay Walker, Boy Band Review, Air Supply, it was a very full week, we had over 6,200, and again, still at half-capacity. Julian Dubuque Film Festival returned to us this last year, again, limited capacity, we still had over 2,400 people through the doors of Five Flags Center that week. And it's great to see these events, the Julian Dubuque Film Festival, Rising Star came back for a limited run. We have Fly by Night running currently in, in our Black Box Theater, so it's, it's, the symphony is coming back for a full season this year, so it's, it's exciting to see people coming back, and they want to, they want to get out and they want to do things. Food and beverage, again, with the COVID restrictions, we were looking at prepackaged foods, lids on just about everything, a lot of touchless points of sale. There are Kinnick Stadium, Jones County Fair, there are other venues are going to a cashless system. We are exploring that, but I don't think Dubuque is quite ready for a cashless system yet, even though that would, you know, I, they still like to have the money in their pocket. We've been very, very fortunate this year, with the labor shortage, of utilizing the nonprofit groups that have missed out this last year in fundraising opportunities for their own groups. They've been coming to, they've, they've been working in our concession stands and selling beer for an hourly wage plus tips, and that has been a really, a good godsend for us with the labor shortage, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to open up maybe half of our concession stands. We now have a really great relationship with about 10 or 12 nonprofits that come in on a regular basis, both college, college sports, fraternities, civic groups, all the way up into Lancaster, they come down to work our events. Again, the 2850 for new revenue on the per cap on March 20th, we're very excited about that, but we just broke it again last year. 200, over $200,000 in food and beverage for just a couple months' work, that's, that's really good for us. Venue sponsorships, we did not see a big drop in advertising for our sponsors, they stuck with us. Some vendors, some sponsors, their contracts did expire, and they've moved on to a different venue, as far as this is not the avenue for them, but for the most part, everybody stuck with us, and we've added a few with Quick Stop, Diamond Joe, U.S. Cellar, these are cash, cash sponsorships. FY21, we finished at a little over 51,000 right now for FY22. We're, we're over the 62,500 mark, probably closer to 63,000 in cash sponsorship, so that's basically money for putting up the, putting up signs and advertising other people's businesses. It's a, it's a nice, nice partnership that we have. Again, some of our partners, most of these are cash sponsorships, others are trade, but for the most part, like Sharon's Furniture, that is a trade with, with Sharon's, they provide all the furniture for the stars, because each act that comes in wants different types of furniture. They want a couch, they want a love seat, they want it green, they want it blue, they want it black, they want it red. And they've been very, very good about lending us their furniture, going back, of course, all disinfected, so they can utilize it again. But it's been a very good experience with our partners, and one of the new ones is Harley-Davidson here with, under new management. They've been working with us with our flat-track racing, a couple other events coming in, so it's, it's been a win-win. Trying to stay relevant, and the media is always important for any business, again, started with our protocols, what do we have to offer, how are we opening up? And these, and the news here, a lot of this coverage reached across the United States, because again, we were one of the few buildings in the United States doing any events at all, and we were, we were getting contacts from media across the United States, asking how are we doing it, what happened? And it was, it was a very good year as far as the reopening process, because the media and our partners, we worked together to make sure everybody was educated on, on the safe opening and what we can do, and, you know, basically the acts that we have coming in. Summer '21, briefly, we've had incredible success in June, July, and August. Lindsey Stirling, an act that I've been chasing down for two years now, great show, came in July, Sticks was two days later. We've had a very good run. The agencies, the promoters are now, because we were working with them during COVID, are returning to us, because they know that the protocols are safe, they know what to expect when they arrive here. So the summer, we usually are very slow in the summer, so we've been, we've been taking off now. There's a lot of, a lot of buildings that have opened up, they're starting to do shows again, and it's, I think it's going to be a little bit more, it's going to be crowded come October, November. With, with the heavy summer traffic that we've had, and the fact that we have to maintain some sort of safety, it's extremely difficult in this particular facility. some sort of safety, it's extremely difficult in this particular facility for the flow of traffic. The number one complaint that we have on our larger shows, the bathroom lines, the concession lines, the, it, it, it's just a very congested, there's no flow to the building. Unfortunately, for a couple of our shows, we've had to rent porta potties and put them in our building so that, so that, to relieve some of those lines, to keep people separated a little bit. I'm not sure what happened in the 70s on how you had 5,000 people in the building. I'm fairly certain they went across the street to the bars, but they are in the corner by the plant or whatever, but the lines are horribly long for the, for the restrooms and you can't sell a beer to a man standing in line for the bathroom. It just doesn't work. As you can see, the, the, the picture on the left, those are actually the, the left-hand side are women in line for the ladies room, there's a line for the concessions and there's a line for the men's room and you can see how they intertwine. The, the other picture are people waiting to get in the, into the arena and they're just, it's just one hallway is what we have. So when, when the discussion is made regarding a renovation, an expansion, relocation, whatever, whatever course is taken, this has to be taken into account because it is a new, we're in a new world right now. And so, you know, all the previous plans, who knows? We need to, we need to start thinking outside the box. But everybody liked it and, you know, we've got a lot of compliments with the exception of the restrooms of, of us reopening. Again, the anchor tenants, Fly By Night, Dubuque Symphony returning, we're very happy to see them. Upcoming events, this is where the, the good news starts to turn neutral. We are loaded with events coming up this fall and, and going through February and even into March of next year. Several of these events, when we, when we created this, they were confirmed, my Paw Patrol Live and one of these concerts that I can't mention, well, okay, Cole Swindell, they have postponed. And what we're seeing is the return of this Delta variant is starting to affect the industry once more. You're starting to see ticket sales start to slow down. You're now seeing, just like we did last year, events beginning to pull off the road, especially the kids events like Paw Patrol. They're, they're very unsure. They're coming back, they're just not coming back in January, they're going, it's a wait and see. So what we're seeing again is another, almost we're not quite where we were last year, but it is, it is, I have the, the last 48 hours has been extremely interesting in this industry because I've talked to 25 of my counterparts and all of them have said that the ticket sales have stopped. People are concerned about the variant. It's not necessarily the older generations, when we first opened up, it was the older audience, members that wouldn't come because they were the most vulnerable. It's now what we're seeing are the, the soccer moms, the parents who don't want to go to a show because they don't want to take something home to their, to their children, basically. And we've, we've heard people say that. We're starting to see some no-shows with some paid tickets. I know of a couple of shows in the Midwest that had over 500 no-shows and they were paid tickets. So people are, people are concerned. So we'll see over the next month or so, it's going to be interesting to see what happens in our industry. And that is the end of my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Sorry to end on a bad note like that, it was a great year.
Questions for council?
Yes. Thank you. And thank you, you can see the work ethic going on at Five Flags. And I want to, two things that I especially appreciate about your presentation is, yes, the events were done and for the audience, but you also benefit the, the area around and you're thinking about our city, which is great because I, I have heard from business owners who really appreciate Five Flags right there. And so thank you for doing those and knowing that there is a corollary going across downtown when that happens. The other I thought was very clever and maybe you came up with this yourself, is that the participation of the nonprofits? Because I work with nonprofits and they are, as you probably know, really looking for ways to, you know, continue what they do and you, you allow them this venue with this win-win. So did you come up with that idea? Because that's great.
I actually brought that from another venue that I was at, from, from Topeka, but I, we, we found was, again, they, they, you have these nonprofits who want to go out and help other people, but they don't have the funds to do it, or it's a, it's a sporting group that needs to go on a trip, can't fundraise. So yeah, it was a win-win. I hope other, you know, other venues are more than welcome to steal it because it's not my original plan, but it's worked out very well here. And what's nice is we allow them to wear their shirts, if they have shirts or uniforms or a banner, put the tip jar out and it's, and they, I encourage them to send out emails saying, don't forget to come to the Dubuque Ice Skating Club's concession stand on the lower level, come see us, you know, to buy a piece of pizza.
And that tip jar is a great idea too, because Dubuque citizens really are generous with our nonprofits. And so you let them know that, oh, we're trying to raise money for this nonprofit, they respond very often. So great, kudos to you and kudos to your staff.
Yeah, the staff has worked very hard.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor Portem, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, HR, for the presentation. Obviously, we're going to be talking about Five Flags again in the coming months. I feel like we have a golden opportunity to hear just from you at this moment, and I just wanted to invite you to, to share with us any thoughts you have. I mean, you told us a few things about, you know, some of the challenges of the arena as it stands right now or of the center as it is. I think those are things that we kind of knew about before, we, now we've seen it really, you know, we, we really get to see it out in the open. Given what you've seen this year, do you have any feedback for us or thoughts for us that could be useful as we go through the next few months? Something for the public to hear too, because we're, I know that I hear about Five Flags all the time, you know, and there, there are challenges that, you know, when we want to make a big purchase and do something big for the community, it's, it sometimes is hard to swallow. But you talked about quite a few benefits and, I mean, I'm pretty blown away by 32 events to, what was the next highest, eight? You know, that you, that other cities were able to pull off. I mean, this was a major economic engine for us at a really difficult time. So anything you can offer to us that, that we should be thinking about or that, you know, from your perspective, that could be helpful as we start to think about this over the next few months?
Sure. And I'm sure you receive a lot of feedback from your constituents and people on the streets. I mean, a lot of you are knocking on doors. And for the most part, it's, it's going to be an education process regarding what Five Flags actually does. The intermodal does not generate, generates income, but not enough, but it serves a useful purpose. Five Flags Center in its current location, I feel is probably the best location for it because if you think about Dubuque as, almost like an ecosystem, that you have, you have Schmidt Island and that's generating down there, you have the riverfront, you have the Millworks District, you have all these various areas and we've developed these areas or about to redevelop these areas. One of the things about downtown is the building itself does so well because of the businesses. They come and they stay in the Holiday Inn or the Julian because they can walk down the street to the event. Then they can walk down the street and go to the bars and restaurants that are already there. Unlike a lot of cities who try to say, we need to build an arena and the development will come, the development's already here and it meshes out really well. I, I strongly, for those who think it should be built somewhere else, talk to the businesses downtown, the restaurants and the retailers that benefit from the Five Flags Center. My personal belief, do we need to look at costs again? Absolutely. We need to take a step back and take a look at it, but we're going to have to do it fairly soon because I, I have a maintenance man that was getting ready to put his keys on my desk, he goes, I can't keep up. I can't keep up with everything that's going on and the costs are continuing to go up. He goes, I can't, I can't do it. So instead of hiring another event coordinator, I need to hire another maintenance man. So just, just for those simple repairs and the bigger repairs. Like anybody who owns a home, after 15 or 20 years, you got to replace the furnace, you got to replace the roof, as, as much as you vacuum, the carpet's got to be replaced. The building wasn't meant to be this long. And when you have this kind of cost and you have the theater, which is not going anywhere, we want to maintain the theater and bring it to, to, and help renovate it a little bit more, it's the perfect location. Now, the citizens need to have, you know, it needs to go to the voters, absolutely. Do we relook at the, the, the size? Do we relook at the costs? But the, I've managed five, I've been a general manager of five different buildings, I've worked in eight different markets, I've never worked or lived in a market this strong as far as people wanting to do things and, and attend events. You know, I, I am, you know, we just booked the Golden Girls Puppet Parody for crying out loud and we're selling a lot of tickets for it because they've never seen that before. They want to see things they'd never seen. And you don't see that in other communities. So it'd be a shame for people to go, I don't want it, tear it down, I don't use it. These are the same people, I'm going to go on a limb, these are the same people that in 1979 had a girl on their shoulders, you turned out to be their wife, future wife, that came to Aerosmith and to Rat and to Kiss and to all these other events when we just opened up. And now they don't want this for their grandkids? Well, that's not right. You have, it's a great opportunity to continue. I, I can work in any market, I want to work here. It's just fascinating on how many people come down and they tell me the stories. I met my wife, I met, you know, I've, my, my, they talk about their first concert, they talk about meeting so-and-so, good, bad and the ugly. And then when, when they go to the concert, they're done, then they go to the bars downtown and they continue the party and then they go home, you know, and then they talk about it some more. And you can see from our ticket sales and the interest that it's not just Dubuques, it's, it's, there's a lot of money coming into the community and that's what's important.
I really appreciate that answer and thank you. And I, I for one think this was a really important presentation, given the questions that are, they're coming at us as a council over the next year about this particular project and what we need to do. I know there's been a lot of questions about it, I know that we put it on the ballot and took it back off and, and my hope is that we can have a very full discussion about this, not just as a council, but as a community. And I really hope that people will tune in and listen to what you just presented to us because I, I mean, I think this was great information for all of us to consider as we think about this over the next year. So thank you, HR.
Thank you for the presentation and I agree, the economic opportunities for Dubuque are, I think, quite large here going forward. But I do have a question about current subsidies and assistance for the finance, because I know as we had just talked, that the expenses do outweigh the, the income or the net income. Is there any conversation or does this occur now that we receive any hotel or motel tax benefit for the Five Flags? Could we maybe increase and have a dollar or a $2 surcharge to help with the operation? Just would like better to understand that potential.
Yeah, more of a question for the city manager.
Right now, the city Dubuque has the maximum statutory allowance for hotel motel tax of 7%. And half of that goes to the Travel Dubuque to finance the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's about a million dollars a year. And the other half goes into the City General Fund to play for things like police officers and firefighters and things like that. So there is no legal capacity to increase the hotel motel tax based on the state law.
None whatsoever even going forward?
Pardon me?
Not even going forward? We don't have that option to reassess maybe?
Well, if you were to take the money from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, you would, we wouldn't have a Convention and Visitors Bureau, but if you were to take it from the general fund...
No, I understand, I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul either. No, I, I get that, okay. I just thought that might be a unique way to increase funding for that. Okay, thank you.
And we are, I mean, we're always open to the possibilities of other things. Right now, we're looking at naming rights for the facility.
There you go.
Because there's, there's no person's name attached to it, so it might be a little bit easier for us to rename the complex, not necessarily maybe the theater, but the entire complex. Bring that down, bring that subsidy down a little bit.
Okay. Well, I think it'll be interesting to see what next steps are created and what the study might show us and/or what, you know, you determined versus expansion versus perhaps just renovation. Thanks.
Ms. Russell?
HR, thank you. And I'd like to thank you in particular for sharing the information on the ticket buyer demographics. I think it's really kind of a surprise to me that, first of all, the ages of people is so evenly divided that, that everyone takes advantage, people of all ages take advantage of your, of this event center. But more interestingly is the fact that maybe some of our lower income residents are taking their valuable dollars to come and enjoy a show at the Five Flags. So it's not just people who have extra dollars that are looking to spend, these are people that are probably making some really careful decisions about spending their dollars and finding value in what you offer and, and coming to your event. So I think those statistics on the ticket buyers are something that we should really keep in mind.
Yeah, because we've, we've talked to a lot of the buyers that come in, that we understand that you have to be able, that you will always have those first three rows or the first five rows of an event at the highest ticket price, but you have to remember the rest of the public who may not want to afford that or can't afford that, or you, you look at making sure everybody can enjoy it. And it's, I think that, and going for, again, going forward, whatever we do, we have to keep that in mind and we keep it affordable, whether the, the way we design the building, the way you, you park, the way you get to the facility, everything has to be taken into consideration for the entire community.
Thank you.
HR, I, I know we talked a couple of months ago at an event and when you mentioned that you're bringing in different shows, that is what I think is really resonating with so many people. It's just, yes, we're, we're used to seeing the same old concerts, but these little smaller shows that are just a little unique, like you mentioned, like the Golden Girls, I was like, I was really excited about something that's different. And I really applaud you for bringing in those smaller acts that just bring something a little bit different to our community that we're not used to. So I'm looking forward to what else you can do next year and as well as...
Yeah, I'll be traveling to Nashville the next two weeks to meet with the agents and the promoters and in, of course, a safe environment, the, the conventions are gone, the conferences are gone. And that's where I find the, the unique, those unique events, the Potted Potters and the Golden Girl shows and the Dinosaur Live that you saw in there. It's going to be a very good show for, for the youth too, because what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring shows to, to all demographics and the, I think the youth is, we have a really good tie-in and a good partnership with the River Museum and what they do, so we kind of piggyback this event onto some of the stuff that they're doing down there.
Thank you, thank you. Any more questions from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, HR, thank you. The motion was to receive and file, and this is the presentation. Adrian, will you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Adrian?
Action item number three is purchase of real estate from River City Development Group
Mr. Mayor Portem.
Mr. Jones.
I would receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Resnick.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Resnick. Do we have any staff? Mike, sir, thank you.
City manager, Mike Van Milligan. Senior counsel, Barry Lindahl, and economic development director, Jill Connors recommend city council approval of a resolution approving an offer to buy real estate and acceptance for the purchase of 156.25 acres of property owned by River City Development Group for a purchase price of $4,218,750 or $27,000 per acre. River City Development Group LLC owns 156.25 acres of property in Dubuque County on the northwest quadrant of the intersection of the southwest arterial and Highway 15161. Dubuque currently has approximately 425 acres of land available for industrial development. We have previously determined that a 20-year supply of industrial park property is about 900 acres in order to be development-ready for opportunities that present themselves. For this reason, it is important when strategic parcels become available that the city consider acquisition. City staff became aware of the property, having been listed and determined that it would be an appropriate viable location for a future industrial park site due to its location and size. The property is well-positioned to attract companies seeking a convenient location for their operations... for their operations as it is adjacent to three four-lane highways, giving way to a fourth, Highways 15161 and Highway 52, the southwest arterial, which gives quick access to Highway 20. The property is also located only three miles from the Dubuque Regional Airport. Site locators often inquire whether Dubuque has developable land near multiple vehicular routes and other modes of transportation. This strategic placement fits that bill. The property is near existing water and sanitary sewer infrastructure that was extended along the south side of Highway 61 to serve the airport. Some grading, paving, and utility infrastructure improvements would need to be made in order to fully serve the property as an industrial park, but if acquired, these improvement projects would be added to an ongoing list of needed infrastructure improvements, some of which may be eligible for federal funding under the American Rescue Plan Act or an anticipated infrastructure bill. The city has negotiated a purchase price of $27,000 per acre for 156.25 acres, for a total purchase price of $4,218,750. This land purchase will be financed by extending the existing industrial park tax increment financing district to encompass this property, the use of tax increment finance district fund balance of $3,572,880, and land sales revenues that occur before June 30, 2022, which is the end of the current fiscal year, and the balance within urban renewal debt. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Is there any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
I get the tough spot that the neighbors are in on Katy Cope, but the fact is, this 156 acres has been for sale for a while, and something was going to happen there. It could be something way uglier than what we'll do to it. This is a land purchase, this isn't a rezoning, this isn't approval of a development agreement that's specific. This is a willing seller who found a willing buyer at this table, I think they did, we'll find out here in a few minutes. Joyce Connor sat in this council for a long time, and she used, we'd get this kind of situation a lot, and she said, you know, if you've got a home and you're looking out your picture window at a beautiful vista, and you like looking at it, you better buy it before someone else does and puts up a Walmart. It happens all the time. Property rights end at the property line, and that's, that's unfortunate if you've tried to build a dream in the country next to a city. The city's probably going to eventually come and be very near you. Now, I'm going to suggest that you're better off with the city Dubuque buying this property than with anybody else buying this property, because we'll have a very public process that defines what this development could be, if it ever even develops. We'll have a very public process that will zone it appropriately for whatever is proposed, or maybe not, based on, based on public input, based on council's opinion of it. You'll have a piece of property that's engineered to manage the drainage and the environmental impact and the visual impact, because that's the way we do developments. Somebody else buying this property, which again, has been for sale, and if we don't buy it, we'll be again, someone else could put up just about anything there, because they won't be dealing with the city Dubuque, they'd be dealing with Dubuque County zoning to get it zoned appropriately for that enterprise. So, I agree with many of the points that you made about community and about health and about safety, but I have to disagree with some of them, too. We're running out of industrial property, and prospects come and find you when you've got something ready. It's a marriage of opportunity and availability. But our track record shows that we don't, we don't do crummy developments, we don't cause harm to our neighbors, and the city Dubuque, the city Dubuque's best interests are served by making this purchase and seeing what the next steps are.
Mr. Mayor Protam. Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the citizens coming up and talking with us and giving their viewpoint, and it's, again, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the comments by Mr. Dickinson. I see Mr. Wernemann out, out in the, and I was hoping, Mr. Wernemann, you might come up and talk to them, talk to us about next steps, because one of the things Mr. Dickinson said is there will be other opportunities that just because we buy the property doesn't mean you're going to be unhappy. But what are the next steps, such as zoning, such as, you know, generally what happens in these instances? What, what chances do the neighbors have for input?
Sure. Wally, we're my planning services manager, so I was able to take a look at the email that was sent by Mr. Peters, and I called him earlier before this meeting to address some of his concerns with regards to the development. Tonight, you're actually looking at all property acquisition to go through that process. It's located in the county, so there will be an annexation public hearing that would go through the process in order to bring it into the city. But then we'll get involved with the rezoning of the property. And when we get involved with the rezonings, especially with industrial development, we are typically rezoned to PI, planned industrial. We have a PUD amendment, and we have the ability to have flexibility with those rules and regulations. They get involved with everything from the land use, but then also maybe some of the development aspects of a property with that as well. And through that public hearing process, we notify all property owners within 200 feet. That's what we're required, we go above and beyond the notification requirements with the state law, which only requires it to be placed in the newspaper. We notify everyone within 200 feet. That being said, it's a public hearing. Anybody can attend those meetings and voice their concerns, just like tonight, going through a public hearing for, or action item for this, you have a public input process. The process is working, and like we've indicated, we like to be very upfront and outgoing in front of our public to let them understand the rules and regulations that are before them. So, there are opportunities, when we go through that planning and development PUD discussion, we'll be reaching out to the neighbors. I know Rick Dickinson, who just, you know, spoke to those individuals, is present. I know he had an opportunity to reach out to some of those property owners that had some questions. And our office is always open to be able to answer those questions as well, to be able to help address some of those concerns. There are opportunities to mitigate screening and buffer requirements and everything that gets associated with that. But as Mr. Jones has indicated, when you look at our industrial development, it's more like a park-like setting. We have larger setbacks, we have more trees and landscaping. Topography really controls how we develop our land with grading and filling and, and access to the property. So, I mean, the location is ideal, and the fact that, as mentioned before, it has direct connectivity to a four-lane highway access. So, as the city grows and develops, those commercial corridors, where you see some of those areas where there are intersection and access, are going to be more of your points for industrial than commercial. And our future land use map has identified part of this property as being identified for industrial development. It's an actual, a natural extension of the existing Tamarack Business Park that was developed in the county. This will be annexed and be developed with the city's process. So, I hope that answers some of your questions that you have.
It does, and the zoning board, the zoning commission, there's a public hearing, and there's, so they have another chance to talk to them about their concerns, and they can address concerns specifically right there, because I've seen things that come from that and that say, we'd like you to add this or take away this. So there's a possibility there. And then they make a recommendation to us, which is always very important to hear what the commission says. So, hopefully, there will be opportunities for citizens, plenty of opportunities to talk about things and get concerns addressed. That was, I guess, my issue. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Wally or for Mike. Just because of the nature of the way this occurred, and we heard today for the comments, because it was in the newspaper, is there an opportunity before it comes before the council, i.e. tonight, for the residents in this area to have had more information or to express better comments on their behalf, rather than just waiting until today?
Well, there's no legal requirement for any notifications, so no, we would not make notifications. We would bring it to the council and make a decision.
Okay, only through the agenda itself, then, when we publish that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam. A quick follow-up to that question. Could you speak a little more to the reasons for that? I mean, we do, there are some reasons why it's not, you know, there, how a city discusses real estate transactions, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Would you, would you enlighten us a little bit on the reasons why, you know, notifying everybody that the city is potentially buying a parcel of land is, can be problematic?
So, the state law allows discussions for property sale or property acquisition to be in closed session, and it's to protect the taxpayer, because the taxpayer, of course, is either going to be the one selling the land or buying the land. And if it's a public discussion, it's going to, it's not possible to, to negotiate in public and have not the other party have complete advantage over what happens in the discussions. And so, any discussions related to the acquisition would be in closed session until there has to be official action, which is tonight, that has to be in public session.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam. I have a question for Wally. Wally, just, just at our last meeting, you talked about the developments and the sustainability points that a developer has to have. Doesn't industrial park have the same kinds of things where they'd need, where we'd need to have a certain number of, I don't know, points or whatever to meet the sustainability requirements?
Yeah, so our residential subdivision requirements, you know, have that point totals. But typically, when we get involved, especially with the city's properties, a lot of times we'll have restrictive covenants for certain things that the developer has to follow with building design, landscaping requirements, street trees. We go a little bit above and beyond what the normal base requirement would be for the ordinance for that. But then, what's the, the beauty of a planning and development is we have that flexibility to be able to write in certain rules or requirements of what they can and can't do, as opposed to like a straight rezoning. Like when you see a C3 general commercial, it's a list of permitted uses, then it just defaults to what our standard development practices would be, like I presented you before. A planning and development allows that flexibility in maybe having some additional requirements that may be associated with it, whether that's additional screening requirements, you know, we have rezonings that come before you that, like Mr. Resnick was indicating before, where they place a conditional rezoning for screening or some other items that may be associated with that. So, there's always opportunities for us to sit down and meet with the neighbors, because typically when we do a rezoning, we ask the, the property owner to reach out to those neighbors and have that discussion, to talk about some impacts that may be mitigated through the development for that. Where the, we'll be the owners of this property for development, so we'll be reaching out to those neighbors. Mr. Dickinson has already indicated that he's going to be reaching out to them, and then we'll be part of those discussions as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of discussion that comes with development, a lot of unknowns, especially, you know, the city has made a significant investment with that southwest arterial for the corridor, the place before it. I do agree, it goes through a beautiful area, a lot of rolling topography that we have throughout our community, but it is a mode of connection and for expansion for land use in our community. So, this is something that is, would be beneficial, and is an ideal location for industrial park development, so.
Mr. Mayor Protam. I would just like to add, if we didn't already have a track record, maybe there could be a little more questioning, but when you go out to Dubuque Industrial Center West, which I did last week with my grandson, you know, there's two beautiful recreational ponds, there were people fishing, there's a playground, there were kids on the playground, there's miles of walking, paved walking paths that I love to go out there for an exercise walk and just peacefully walk through what appears to be the countryside in the middle of an industrial park. And I'm making no promises about what's going to be in this industrial park, but I can look at the ones that we already have, and the mayor and council goes above and beyond to make them attractive and pleasant places to be, and not just for the businesses and employees that are out there, but for the community to enjoy, and you really see them go out there and enjoy it.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just one other comment along those lines. If the city Dubuque is the owner of the property and is working with a prospect to develop it for something, we have control over what that property looks like, what goes into that planning and development, what, what rules and exceptions and everything else. If River City Development Group LLC sells the property somewhere, they shake hands, it's yours. And whoever buys it makes whatever decisions they want, consistent with, with the local zoning laws. So, I think there's some serious advantage. If I lived across the street from it, I'd find some advantage in city Dubuque ownership and development versus private development for that reason.
Mr. Kavanaugh. I'll try to keep this brief, but I just, I want to address Mr. and Mrs. Vossen directly, because I feel you came here tonight, and I very much appreciate you doing that, and I think you deserve to know why, you know, we'd be voting in the way that we do. All the reasons stated up here, I think, are some things that I've been thinking about throughout this. But I've had some bad neighbors in my day. I mean, I really have. And I know that, you know, from my perspective at least, I want to do everything that I can do to make sure that we, as the city of Dubuque, are a good neighbor. I do plan to vote for this tonight, and I'm doing so because I'm thinking about not just the next two, three years, but the next 20 and 30, and what needs to happen. Something that city manager Van Milligan mentioned is something that is really important to me in thinking about this, and it's, you know, you go through industrial parks in some other cities, and you just see nothing but the things that you mentioned. You see pollution, you see the bad neighbors who are leaving things behind the buildings. And I think that it's important as we go forward with this, you know, because this is a land acquisition tonight, but as we go forward and think about development, I do think it's important that we, we think about what we want those neighbors to look like, you know, as we develop this land potentially in the, in the years ahead. And that'll be an important consideration that I know I would make, and I will make as long as I'm a member of this council. But I just wanted you to know that, you know, it's impossible to look anywhere within two to five miles of the city of Dubuque and be able to find a land that's not going to impact somebody who already lives there if we were to purchase it. So, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, because I'm personally thinking about the fact that it is important that we, we consider what kind of neighbors we are going to be. But I do plan to vote for this tonight, so thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have really anything on the subject parcel to add, other than, you know, it is a prime location for an industrial park, four-lane access, it's close to the airport, you know, it's at the other end of, at your side of town, I guess, from our large industrial park, and that, I think, creates a lot of opportunities for people, for jobs in the future. And, well, for all the, all the positive reasons that were stated, I, you know, I tend to vote for this agreement, this person. One other thing I just wanted to remind the council of is that if anyone wants, anyone from the audience who speaks, they should go through the mayor, the mayor Protam, the chair of the meeting. That's just a procedural thing I want to remind people of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess, the way I look at this whole issue is it's an, it's an opportunity. We aren't going to get very many of these right now, and it's being sold at a decent price. 10 years ago, I wanted to buy, I live in a very residential neighborhood, surrounded by rentals. 10 years ago, I had a landlord approach, I tried to buy a property from a landlord, and he said no, and he kept saying no. And the other day, he walked up to me. He's offering me a price that I don't quite agree with, and I prob, I don't know if I can make it work, but this we can make work, this is the future, this is the way I want to, I, this is the vision that I have for our city that I want to see keep happening. Greater Dubuque just said, we lost a ton of people, we're missing an age population here. I am part of that age population. I keep seeing my generation leaving this city. Here's an opportunity to bring in more businesses, to keep people, to bring in that middle management age, to refine back those people that we lost. I would not want to walk away from this opportunity, and I do apologize that this is going to probably affect you on some level. I wouldn't like it. I deal with neighbors that I don't like right now, that I try to work with every day. I can't even get them to pick up garbage, so I feel for you. But this is an opportunity for the bigger picture of our city that can grow us and push us farther, so I also will be supporting this. And Ms. Farber.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Mimi and Tony for coming this evening to speak with us, and I have known this family for many, many, many decades. And I just wanted to thank Brad for his comments, which I do support. I think that, as Mike had said, that we will, as a city-owned piece of land, do our best to make sure that we are good neighbors, and as Rick has made that gesture, to have more communication to work with you on the development as we do that. So, again, I want to thank you for your time, energy, and your sincere heartfelt thoughts that you shared with us tonight, and hopefully, we do our best to... that you shared with us tonight, and hopefully we do our best to stand up to that good neighbor that the city should be as we move forward and progress forward for the economic development and also for the residents in that area. So thank you.
Looks like that's enough discussion. The motion was to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Move on.
Action item number four is amending a tax increment ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as amended by version 2021.4 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that our proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second. Second by Kavanaugh. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Mike, I'm sure you have something.
City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors recommends city council adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance 22-21 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as the district's boundaries were amended by version 2021.4 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan. The proposed amendment would remove from the tax increment financing ordinance area that portion of the district that was removed from subarea C of the district by version 2021.4. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Do we have any discussion from council? All right, seeing none. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passing of the ordinance.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Adrian, would you call the roll?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven zero. Adrian.
Action item number five is amending a tax increment ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as amended by version 2021.5 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that our proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second. Second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Jones. Mike.
City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors recommends city council adoption of an ordinance, amending the most recent ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as the district's boundaries were amended by version 2021.5 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan. The proposed amending ordinance would expand the district to include the property to be designated as subarea O by version 2021.5 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan in the tax increment financing ordinance area of the amended and restated urban renewal plan. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
And do we have a council discussion? All right, seeing. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and adoption of the ordinance.
Second. All right, Mr. Jones. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Adrian, would you call the roll again?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you for the reminder. I do have a quick council member report. Last week, I was able to attend the Iowa League of Cities Conference in Coralville as a member of the Iowa League of Cities Executive Board and was happy to accept another, being elected to another term on the executive board for the next two years, so I look forward to being able to represent Dubuque on that board. And, you know, the Iowa League of Cities does some amazing work across the state. It was a great opportunity to be able to communicate with leaders in other cities in both eastern and western Iowa to talk a little bit more about some of the same challenges that we are all having. One of the things that I wanted to make sure I mentioned to everybody here is that we did adopt some legislative values, and they're very similar to what we've had before as a league of cities, but those values include five different things: local control, financial stability, economic development, infrastructure, and public safety. So we can expect to see those same things that we will be advocating for in the Iowa legislature going forward. So I just want to make sure I pointed that out for everyone, and it was a good time to learn a lot about some pretty interesting development that's been happening in Coralville and other places, too, so I think it's a great learning opportunity for all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Farber.
So we once again had another meeting on behalf of the sister cities, and Adrian was also in attendance as we are moving forward for the October 14th and 15th and 16th exhibition down in the Millwork District for representation of the three sister cities that we have, one in Austria, one in Russia, and one in China. So that will be a photography exhibit, and hopefully we'll start being, you'll see some promotion within the city, so it should be an interesting three-day event for the sharing of our cultural background. So, thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. I just want to let you know that last Saturday, I was able to participate with an event called Every Voice Matters. I was joined by Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Jones, Mr. Sprank, and Ms. Farber were there, all supporting the idea. It was more of a voting situation, but it was also about every voice matters in our community, and we all were there to say, please, we want to hear from you. And so I appreciate that opportunity for those who sponsored it, and it's a great message that every citizen should have their voice, you know, voice heard, and their opinion matters to us. So I was really appreciative to participate in that, and there's a lot going on in our community, and that's one of the good things.
Thanks. And myself, I was able to do some mayor Protam duties where I was asked to help carry the keg for the Oktoberfest event, which was a really nice event. Yeah, it was so, it was arduous, I tell you, but it was a very nice event. It was great to see folks being, using that great space down there, using where the Q Casino donated, where they donated the land, or donated the whole parking lot and the venue, so they raised some great funds. With that, yes.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Sprank and I got to talk to the Leadership Dubuque class this year, this week, I should say, and room full of young, energetic, smart people that are really digging in, learning about city government, learning about participatory government, and unfortunately for us, we were following Mike Van Milligan, who's pretty good at talking to groups like that.
He did.
So they were already a little bit inspired, but we kept them tiptoeing a little bit, and I think they like all of you.
All right, well, Adrian.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I move the city council to go into closed session in accordance with chapter 21.5 of the Code of Ida to discuss various legal matters.
All right. Second. All right. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. For the matter of record, our attorney will be present, and, yes, Adrian, would you call the roll then?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.